Call the May 13th, 2019 City Council Committee, the whole meeting. Order the clerk will call the roll.
Borowitz, Brereton.
Here.
Alderman Crawford will be absent. Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. This evening, under public comment, we are welcoming a couple of guests. I have a proclamation and they have a presentation for us. Our guests this evening are Mr. George Davis, the Executive Director of Community Services in City Rockford, and Letitia Wallace, Deputy Director of Program Operations. If you guys would like to come up, then we'll share this proclamation.
Thanks for having us.
Proclamation, whereas community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, then community action agencies have a 54-year history of promoting self-sufficiency with those with insufficient income, and whereas the national network of over 1,000 community action agencies have made essential contributions to the lives of individuals, families, and communities, including thousands each year living in Boone and Winnebago Counties and the city of Belvidere by providing innovative and effective programs and services. And whereas community service, excuse me, community action agencies are needed as major participants in the reform of the welfare system as we know it, and whereas welfare reform in Illinois has benefited from the state's partnership with community action agencies, and whereas those with insufficient income continue to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity, and whereas the city of Belvidere, state of Illinois, and the entire United States must continue to promote economic security and opportunities by engaging all citizens in building stronger communities. Now therefore, I, Michael Chamberlain, Mayor of the city of Belvidere, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month in Belvidere, Illinois, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of the community action agency of Boone and Winnebago County. A witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Belvidere to be affixed this 13th day of May 2019. And that is for you.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
And we have a little, a very special treat tonight. They're going to share with us the community action report for 2019.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're gonna do this in two parts and not take hopefully too much of your time. Really, just briefly, I would just give an overview of why we're here tonight, but Letitia's then going to walk through a short presentation. My part is just to point out that we've, on your, on your tables, we've given you a copy of our annual reports that really describes the services that we provide to the two-county area. The one exception to the services that we provide is that our Head Start program serves Winnebago County but not Boone County because there's another Head Start program that actually serves Boone County, so we, we're not over here for that particular program. But all of our other services are provided in the two-county area. So we wanted you to have this information and to be aware of the work that we do. The history and legacy of community action is long and rich, and as the proclamation says, really has to do with helping those whose incomes do not allow them to meet their basic needs. That's been an ongoing challenge of humanity, not just, you know, the United States. But one of the interesting things that I was noting in driving over here today and listening to the radio is a report that states that, that the gap between those at the top of the economy and those at the bottom of the economy is actually growing. In spite of the economic improvement that we've seen, the job situation's improved, unemployment has, is at a low, inflation is low, but nonetheless, the gap between those at the top and the bottom of the economy is, are, is getting greater. One of the markers for that, that we all need to be concerned about, is the issue of affordable housing. In fact, apparently, a report was just done nationally that pointed out that the access to affordable housing is actually the greatest for those at the lowest in the economy. In other words, rent, people who are more likely to be renters, and their rent is actually rising faster than the incomes are rising, and the fact that, you know, realtors and those who own properties have been able to increase their rents, but the people who are renting from them oftentimes can't keep up based on their, their actual income rising fast enough. Those at the top of the economy, who tend to be more likely to be homeowners, are actually doing better. So that's one of the things that we should all be concerned about, because the more people we have that are displaced because of unaffordable housing, the more issues we have in our community. So what Letitia's gonna do is just walk you through a presentation on a proposal that we have, that we are, really have been forwarding through the Rockford City Council, and we want you to be aware of as a city as well, around how a step we can take as a community action agency to address closing this gap of affordable housing. So thank you again for having us as your guests tonight.
Yes, thank you. Is it okay?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Do you want the lights on or off, Letitia?
Are you able to see? Okay, the screen is all right. And I'm sure I'm probably blocking others, but, and I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me? All right, all right, there we go. So as Mr. Davis mentioned, we have been working to try to move forward with creating more affordable housing in this area that the community action agencies services. And Mayor Chamberlain, if you don't know, I'm sure you do know, is the Chair of our Board, and we've had some extensive discussion around how do we make sure that the residents of our area have access to affordable housing. Right now, there are dollars actually available through the community grant, and the Economic Development Grant as well. So this is a presentation that was originally given to the Executive Committee and then the larger community action board. I'm not gonna go through every single slide, but I will provide, I can email copies so that you guys are fully aware. But as we talk about the work of community action, the work is really to help to allow individuals a lot of dignity, even if they are experiencing poverty. But this quote really strikes me, because one way of actually addressing poverty and providing that dignity is to address affordable housing, making sure that cities across our area, across our state, and across our country actually allow for people who go to work everywhere, but maybe they don't have the highest wage job, but they still need someplace to live, and that's where affordable housing comes into play. And I'll add a caveat that I probably should have at our own city council in Rockford, is that affordable housing is definitely not synonymous with project-based housing. It just simply has a particular definition, which we'll get into. So some of the barriers that people face, some of the reasons why they're not able to access housing that's affordable to their income, maybe if they have a disability, maybe some of the structural issues are leading to them being discriminated against and having lower wages. We still know that there's a wage gap for women, and we know there's a wage gap between certain racial groups as well. Then citizens who are 65 and older may be on a fixed income, and they're not always, you know, project-based housing that can address their needs. And then I'll talk a little bit about what the actual definition of a community housing development organization is. So let's paint the picture. Why is that important for affordable housing? Because again, as we just heard from Mr. Davis, our wages are not keeping up with the rent prices. They're just simply on that. So you have individuals who are facing financial, or, you know, struggling to figure out how to pay for rent, how to pay for housing costs, on a low-income income. So thus, initially, we looked at Rockford, because that's where we see the highest amount of poverty in our particular region, and it's not that there isn't poverty in Boone County as well. But the only thing about Rockford is it actually has lower housing costs, but the wages are pretty low. And I think some of our median housing is actually lower than the median housing in Belvidere. But here's the definition of what would make housing affordable, and I think it's really important to point this out. A severely cost-burdened household is paying 50% or more for housing costs. And a cost-burdened household is paying 30% or more of their income for housing costs. Right, so that's why I said there's a big distinction between affordable housing and project-based housing. Because affordable simply means whatever you earn, hopefully you're not cost-burdened or severely burdened. So actually, having access to affordable housing can help to reduce some of the burden around housing for residents throughout the state of Rockford and throughout Winnebago and Boone Counties. And just to put it into context, because I'll show a little bit about the poverty stats, even people who get up in the work of the day, if they're earning a minimum wage or somewhere around $10 or $11 an hour, they're still way far within one of these categories of the federal poverty level, depending upon the number of people in their household. And that does have an impact on that 30% or 50% affordability. So for a person, a single person making $12,000, $12,140 a year, that one individual who's living in poverty. So what does this look like in our area? Belvidere actually does a lot better than Rockford. About 15% or so of the residents are down in poverty. It's slightly lower than the Illinois average, but it's eight points almost lower than Rockford's average of poverty. I mean, Rockford's at a point where almost 1 in 4 people might be living in poverty. This is again a bit of a Rockford-specific slide because of the depth of the poverty there, and then there's huge discrepancies as well as to what that demographic blackout is. They say pretty steady for Latinx or Hispanic population, but our area is so higher than the Illinois average, which is, the yellow is Illinois and the blue is the Rockford area. So we're still higher for African-Americans, low-income for Latinx, and then white individuals actually do better in Rockford than at the state level. Gender plays a big role, a big part, and part of that is, again, the wage discrepancies that I talked about before. On average, women make about 77 cents for every dollar a man makes, and that is lower, that 77 cents is lower if you are black or Latina, if you're a black woman or Latina. And thus, particular age range, so pinkish women, where they say when they hit about 24, that there's a drastic difference between men and women living in poverty. And that continues up until about the 45, 55. And that's usually around the time that women are becoming mothers, being taken out of the workforce sometimes. So it's not necessarily shocking, but it does show that being a woman who's becoming a mom, it definitely impacts her ability to earn. And then, so going as Boone County, and this is for children, yellow is Winnebago County and all of Illinois. So that is actually doing well, considerably comparatively, in terms of child poverty. Rockford, not, or Winnebago County, not so much. And the state as a whole really could do a lot better for our children. And a woman individual on a fixed income, if they have, if they have a severe disability, your medical payments are worth $733 a month. If you're looking for a home, bedroom, home in this area, that you'll spend 79% of your income. So that goes back to the point of cost burden and severely cost burden, and those challenges that people face to get affordable housing. So in this area, in order to afford a general, maybe two-bedroom apartment, you have to earn about, almost $15 an hour. And that's, there are not a lot of jobs that necessarily pay that, and a lot of our son, but you would need to learn, earn about that to not be cost-burdened. Homeownership in our area is actually lower, if you're looking at Rockford, than the state comparative. So the, the blue lines are individuals who are actually owning their homes, and the yellow bars individual, or captivates individuals who are renting. And what you say that, you know, we have more homeownership. So even though Belvidere has lower numbers than the state average, you do still have more individuals renting than owning, as compared to the average. So we have more homeownership, right? Especially this body, right? You want more homeownership so you can get more property tax. And that's a dirty word. So why would I run into this? Yeah, so just talk about, you know, homeownership, what income should look like to be able to afford housing, but this is a very, this is like one of my favorite slide, because that word is not a good thing. Because that word is, in my vacation up the state of Illinois, the state of the state that's actually a donor state to the overall federal economy and the federal path. So we send out a dollar to the federal government, we give back about 55 cents. So can you have money on the table at the federal level? And then there, in the small group of states, those five states, live the most money on the table. We get the least amount of money from federal grants and programs throughout the country. So Illinois is fifth in terms of that lowest amount. And there's that money, and we're showing you have money on the table. And right now, though some of the programs that the city of Rockford or the cab, but in other agencies, based on the city of Rockford, will actually have access to a number of dollars, a significant chunk of money, about a half a million dollars, that could be used toward developing a community housing development organization. And those organizations are meant specifically to connect all those categories that we just talked about to affordable housing. So what would it look like for seniors or a disabled individual or a young mom to be able to have access to affordable housing? As a nonprofit, that's an independent organization, but it is accountable to a board, and it makes sure that there's representation from those communities that it will be providing affordable housing to, there's representation on that board. And that's very similar to the community action board, but Mayor Chamberlain is the President of, or Chair of. So this is basically the latter, the sponsoring organization. There's then an independent board that's created, allowing little-ness federal barriers from the community services grant or the community development grant and home funding, and all of those are at federal level funds that then could be used to create affordable housing. So the structure of that board, as I said, would also include individuals who are low-income or individuals who work with low-income people. Part of that board would be appointed, because of the way our community action agency is set up, part of the board would be appointed by the city of Rockford City Council, but then the other third, well, there are two thirds left, the other third can't be appointed by those people who are already there. So if Rockford City Council appoints, you know, three people, those three people can't then say, oh, we're gonna tell who the rest of the board is gonna be. The other portion would be independent, and we'd have to also look for individuals, like I said, who are low-income or representative of those communities. Our region has not been able to utilize the travel funds since 2012, mostly because we don't have nonprofit organizations that are able to take this public money and access other private capital to help to build out or rehabilitate homes so that we can build affordable housing. So again, when I go back to that, we're analyzing the work, we're just kind of leaving money on the table. So just a little graphic layout of what it could look like. The sponsoring organization getting a bill, the charter itself being independent, that's the green, and then they're leveraging the community action agency. The community development department can start to help with blighted areas and rehabilitation, and then our human services department is able to use some of the federal training dollars that we have for, for workforce development, so maybe we're teaching individuals how to help do that rehab. And then we can also do some wraparound services for people who are just struggling to figure out how to make sure they can stay in a home. That's just some of the eligible activity, and we'll go through all of those, but just now, but again, it's not synonymous with project-based housing, so there's opportunity, if there's an empty house on your block, and we have a developer who's able to help to leverage some of the public dollars and some of their private dollars and go and fix that house up, then that might be a home for a senior. That might be a home for someone who's disabled and wouldn't be affordable to them. The objectives are totally to make sure that we increase homeownership, increase home development in our region, make sure that there are permanent housing options, so the one population, I haven't specifically talked about, is the homeless population, but we wanna make sure that, that we'll have some permanency, and that we're decreasing the burdens on our regional shelters. And this is why we're getting a little technical, and I don't have to go into all of this, but I just wanted to share what we're doing, that that, again, of the wraparound services would be to make sure that we have partners, and we definitely have great community partnership by having Mayor Chamberlain as part of the community action board, and I know that he has worked tremendously throughout the region to make sure that he's leveraging partnerships for Belvidere, and I know that that would only benefit the community housing development organization, should we be able to develop this. And this again would help provide those wraparound services for people so they're able to stay in their home. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Letitia and George?
Yes, sir.
What did you say, the minimum salary was considered in poverty level?
Well, it depends on the number of people in the home, but about $12,000 per year for an individual is, will meet the federal poverty, poverty level, yes.
Typically, for, you know, a family of four, it would be somewhere around $24,000, $25,000 for a family of four, and for every, you know, additional family member, you can add about $4,000 to that, to that rate to get to where the current poverty rate is. There's an interesting discussion going on right now in the federal administration about actually changing the way in which poverty is calculated with regard to the cost of living adjustments that get added to that rate every year. They're looking at using a different way to do it, in a way that would make millions of people potentially ineligible for means-based services, and it's something that, you know, people should be very concerned about, because it's a way, in effect, to redirect federal money away from people who would now, all of a sudden, be not considered eligible for services and assistance. So it is something that we, it is a good thing to be aware of how poverty is being measured, because it often determines your eligibility for lots of programs and services. But the goal here isn't really to sort of make people just eligible for government services, it's really to help people find a path to be as self-sufficient as they can be, and to really, you know, create a path to homeownership for those who really can continue to improve their situation, right, by work and training, but we have many populations that are not able to do that. Among the homeless, the biggest challenge we face now is the chronic mental illness and substance abuse issues that are affecting the folks that are not able to be housed effectively. And a lot of those individuals require, require a lot of support. But what we want to do is to try to create a path for anyone who can to be able to, at some point, be able to own their own home.
Yes, on this note?
So this may not be a popular topic, but the problem I see with renters is that almost everybody cringes when a house gets sold and it's gonna be rented out, because usually it's a huge, huge crapshoot as to whether or not they're gonna be good neighbors or not. And generally speaking, they're not. You luck out if you get one in 10, if it's a high transition, one in four, if it's every two or three years, it, it rolls over. And I think part of that is the fact that the people just don't care. They're not, it's not their house. They don't care. They're not gonna stay there, and so the rest of us wind up suffering, and it creates a bad attitude amongst everybody. So when you talk about low income and making affordable housing, the landlords wanna up their ante, because if they are gonna have to go through a bunch of hoops, they wanna be able to recover the losses that they're experiencing and/or get better people that are gonna maintain the place. So I don't know if there's anything to do about that. And one of the things, when you talk about the women and having the lower wages and it kept falling into higher poverty, is there any correlation to the unwed mother issues of having larger families but with no support group and creating an issue there? I don't know if that's being addressed.
Actually, you see that dip in wages whether the woman is partnered or not. It just, I mean, part of it is just the simple fact that you, even if it's just for a short period of time, you will be out of the workforce after you give birth. Whether it is two weeks, six weeks, six months, you're gonna be out of the workforce. But if you're in a lower-scale job or not in a, if you're not necessarily in a professional career, that definitely then impacts your ability to apply for other jobs, and then people look at the gap in time if you don't have benefits that allow for paid leave or some type of supplement or are holding on to your job. So the feminization of poverty is something that you see, and the lower wages definitely doesn't matter if you're married or not, women experience that. And to the point of renters, I didn't show the video, but there is a model in Detroit where they allow individuals to kind of have this affordable housing, and if they're doing what they need to do over the course of seven years, and they're partnering, again, with social service agencies and community neighborhood groups to make sure that people get to stay there in those homes, but at the end of those seven years, they do become owners of that home. And then that too creates a little more of what you're talking about, that investment and, you know, learning that this is mine and I need to be able to keep it up. Now, the piece about charters is you can kind of tailor it to which population that you want to go after. So I gave examples of kind of all the populations that are experiencing lower wages and might struggle with housing, but they may decide as a board to say, we're gonna focus only on those with disability, or only on seniors, or individuals who are fleeing intimate partner violence, we're gonna make sure that we have permanency for that. So you can kind of tailor it.
Alderman Freeman?
So I have to disagree, once again, with Alderman Snow on a couple things. First of all, I don't, I don't believe that your income has anything to do with whether you are or are not a good person or a good tenant. Second of all, I think that a lot of it is greed by landlords. When the housing market fell, a lot of people bought up foreclosures for cheap, you know, we're talking $40,000, and they turn around and say, well, I can get $1,000 a month for it, when their, their payment's actually only $400. I think that's one thing where I don't believe personally that landlords should be making money off their tenants like that. I think that the property itself and the equity that, that it gains over time should be what their investment is, and not, you know, charging people at arm and a leg that they can't afford for something that they bought for pennies on the dollar. I, I don't know, I think that's, that's a huge... I don't, I don't know, I think that's, that's a huge problem that Belvedere had, for one, was a lot of foreclosures being.
We certainly, see, I think this, this, these issues are oftentimes very controversial because there's multiple sides to it or, you know, perspectives that you look at it from, and all of them have validity and truth to it. There's certainly, but when it comes down to it, there's really, the only way we can really make progress as communities is to really, is to really recognize the rights and responsibilities of everyone involved in, in the process of really making housing affordable and addressing issues of challenges with regard to income. What we have to, though, hopefully, agree on is that there is definitely a gap of affordability for many families, whether we want to blame or place cause as to why that exists. And yes, it's true that single female-headed households' incomes are going to be significantly lower generally because of the fact that they's got one income, and then that that income is also affected also by the fact that they're female, that's going to make it even more so. But then we also do have issues with landlords who may not be always operating in the most ethical way, not all, and tenants who aren't really responsible, but not all, right? So we have to be, I think, somewhat always careful to not, you know, either put too much weight on, it's either the fault of, you know, owners or landlords, or it's the fault of tenants, it's probably in reality somewhere in between. But the question becomes, how do we, as a community, hold everyone accountable for making the situation better? And then creating opportunity and a path toward being able to find a better way. Because a lot of people who are poor make what most of us would call bad choices, be given that they oftentimes are faced between one bad choice versus another bad choice. And so oftentimes, one compounds the other. You know, we see a situation where someone is in a situ, where they can't really afford their rent, they stop paying, or they don't keep up with their rent, you know, and if they don't know where and how they're going to find someplace that they can't afford, they just, you know, keep, they string that out as long as they can, they get evicted, they get their name on a bad list, and even when they try to go somewhere else, they've now been labeled as a bad tenant, and the spiral continues. The result of this is that we end up with families and oftentimes children who are affected by, because they're either living in unstable environments where they're moving around all the time, or they're not housed at all, and then we all pay. So there's no way, there's no way out of this that doesn't involve all of us having to figure out a way that we take responsibility for addressing it. And it doesn't mean that we don't hold people who are facing income challenges accountable for their part, but we also do have to hold landlords, you know, accountable as well.
It's all about opportunity and equity, and it's a question of community health. And we've seen all the, all the models that don't work. We've had this chamber filled with good landlords who don't want any regulation whatsoever because it's overreached by the government. And then again, we turn around and see an apartment building caught on fire, and a loss of life, and something that we had to push down. So there has to be a meeting in the middle of concerned citizens at all levels of the community with an opportunity for people to move forward. We have not yet had to take back one habitat for a humanity house. We've got nine of them now, and there are two going, two projects this year. Giving people an opportunity sometimes makes the difference for them being able to step up. And these are people who have had multiple issues facing them, including inequity of income, mental illness, disability, problem with workforce training. But until we all function together to try to solve the problem instead of sitting on one side of the fence or one side of the fence and saying it's their fault or it's their fault, we're not going to get anywhere with this. So this is an action being put forward that makes sensible use and tries to get our access to more of the dollars that really should be coming back to us already to solve these issues. We all know, we pay taxes, a lot of taxes, and the state gives us back what they feel like giving us back. So this is something that all of you can weigh in on, this is something that I would encourage everybody to get involved in and find a positive way to help affect the outcome. It's, it's doable.
So Mayor, I would just add, because I know you all want to get on to your business, but I would add, what's just one last thought to relieve you with, and that is, in our decade-long effort to address chronic homelessness, you know, what we've seen in our agency is that when you can provide people with a path to safe, affordable, and stable housing, everything else improves. And so that's, that's why it's so important that we, that we give attention to this. We oftentimes want people to sort of be ready or sort of like demonstrate that they deserve, you know, access to affordable housing because they have to be a better whatever. That's a valid concern for people who are irresponsible and who just simply have no responsibility regard for others. But when it comes to those situations where people just don't have the opportunity to figure out how to break that cycle, if you give them, and we've seen this with veterans that are on the street, we've seen it with people with mental illness, as the mayor said, we've seen it with families. I can testify from my own family, having grown up in public housing in the city of Chicago and having really faced, you know, these issues. My family, where we moved four times in one year, I remember after we left public housing, because my parents didn't know that, how hard it was going to be for them to actually get to a point where they could stabilize our housing, but they knew they had to get out of public housing. And, but they didn't know how they were going to do it. Took us a year, four, four moves, but we figured it out, my parents figured it out. Not every family is that fortunate as we were to be able to figure it out and to have them, and even though as fortunate as we were, we still had to move four times. The reality is that if you can provide that stability, everything else, and I can tell you, the point, that point at which our family's life changed was when my parents bought their first home. Everything else from that point was better. And that's the goal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks for coming over.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, yes.
Under public forum this evening, we have nothing to address. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, under number one, building, planning, and zoning unfinished business, there is none. Under building, planning, and zoning new business, we have a plumbing code, plumbing inspector discussion to be presented by our beloved city attorney, Michael Drell.
This is actually an initiative begun by the Director of Buildings, Mr. Countryman. He was looking at modifying our current relationship with the building inspector. Previously, we hired an independent contractor to perform that function at a significant cost to the city. And when he came on board with the City of Belvedere, Mr. Countryman suggested we perhaps utilize the services of the state plumbing inspectors and provide plumbing inspection services at currently no cost to the city. And so the mayor and the director felt that was appropriate to give that shot, and when we started discussing, I thought, you know, I'd better look at our code and see what it says about plumbing inspectors. And before you, in strikeout online format, is the current City of Belvedere code with suggested changes, it's actually found in Article Four of Chapter 22 of our code, and Division, subdivision two of that article talks in terms of the plumbing inspector. I was surprised to learn, because quite frankly, I hadn't looked at this in probably a decade or more, that we had something called a division of plumbing inspectors. We've never had a division of plumbing inspectors. We've had a plumbing inspector, always had just one, not a division, and that person has always worked for the Director of Buildings, and even in the old code it suggested that, but almost had them as this quasi-independent person. And given the new suggestion or suggestion of utilizing the state plumbing inspectors, I thought it appropriate to modify that code section. So essentially what it does, it leaves in place a plumbing inspector, sub to the funding by this council, of course, but it also provides that that plumbing inspector does not have to be an employee, it could be an employee if the council so chose, it could be an independent contractor, which is what we've been using for the last, it's got to be close to a decade, or alternatively, we could leave the position vacant, in which case we'd utilize the services of the State of Illinois plumbing inspectors. That's the, really, the, the big change in it. In Chapter 22 dash 237, there are significant changes, but really just to reinsert those initial changes aligned for the state to do this work. I took out the section with respect to preferring changes with the Department of Registration or charges with the Department of Registration and Education, because quite frankly, anybody can do that. Why would we leave it just with the plumbing inspector? Mr. Countryman could do that, I could do it, the mayor could do it, anybody can do that, so leave that as a possibility for any city employee to do it. And with respect to subsection C, I made it general neutral. And in subsection D, I simply made it very clear that the inspector can, with the Director of Buildings, taking any action with respect to reinspection of the premises, to make sure it complies with all of our codes. And finally, I was recommending a removal of subsection D because, quite frankly, portions of it are contrary to state law. While obviously we have the right to inspect buildings, we don't have the right to just walk in without a warrant and do that. Somebody lets us in, or if they request a permit, we have the right to go in there and inspect a building, but absence, exigent circumstances, absence a, a warrant, if they say no, then we have to go get a warrant. So that's really, a lot of those last three paragraphs were contained in that. The job of the plumbing inspectors is to enforce the code. If they find a violation, go ahead and enforce the code, and if they're having difficulty getting the person to cooperate to contact my office, in which case we'd get the appropriate warrant and/or initiate a lawsuit to force compliance with the code. And that is what the provisions changed. So we'd recommend at this point is a motion to approve the amendments to subdivision two of Article Four of Chapter 22 of the Belvedere Municipal Code, and this will come back to you in an ordinance form.
I have a motion to approve. Also move. Motion by Alderman Ratcliffe, second, please.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any further discussion or comment? Yes, Alderman Porter.
I'm not opposed, I'm just questioning this Section D here. Shouldn't we leave that in there about notifying the homeowner in writing? I think that's fair that we should have to.
Subsection D?
Yep.
No, because we are required, how do I phrase this? We can't, the subsections D, E, and F were actually all read together. And it created a, a nonjudicial means of trying to enforce the code, when I say nonjudicial, I mean not utilizing the court systems, in which the inspector would give a notice, and then if they didn't comply with the notice, then subsection E said he would send out orders, giving them time within which to fix things. And if they didn't do that, then essentially condemn the building. And we have state statutes that govern condemnation of buildings and how to handle that process, and this was not in conformance with those state statutes. So it's not that they wouldn't be getting notice within which to rectify issues, yes, they'd still get notices of that, but rather than trying to, without utilizing compliance with state law, without utilizing the court system, just force them to do it. We'd be required to give them a notice still, of course, and then if they don't, serve them with summons through the court system and go through that process. So they're still going to get the written notices, it's just we're taking away this...
Hours that were not ours legally enforced.
I didn't want to say it that way.
Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So 22 dash 338, did you not just say they would need a warrant to enter?
Yes, he has the right to enter the buildings of making inspections, and we still have that right. However, if they refuse entry, they can't just force their way in, that'd come back to me and go get a warrant. We always have that right when they come get a permit, because by getting that permit, they basically ask for consent to do that. And there's, of course, circumstances of exigent circumstances. A classic example would be, you know, we noticed massive leaks going into the basement, or huge water usage and things like that. But, but in general, no, if somebody says, no, I don't want to in my building, then they would come to me, we'd go get a warrant from a judge to go into the building. I did strike out the language regarding the official badge of office and all these things. We don't, we haven't given badges to anybody in the department in years. I mean, I think an ID would be appropriate, but a badge?
Alderman Snow?
Does this affect any of the inspections that were not being done in the area of the study that they wanted to get into to find out if they were having infiltration of the stormwater?
No, not at all. Nope, not at all.
Okay.
That's all public works and, and stormwater issues, and this is plumbing systems, potable water.
Alderman Freeman.
Do we have a public, or a plumbing inspector now?
We have already begun utilizing, if I'm not, if I'm not correct, correct me, but we've already started utilizing the State of Illinois plumbing inspectors.
Who do not charge us. Alderman Snow?
Didn't we sign a contract or have it budgeted at some point to have the inspector and inspector, and what does that do time-wise for us as far as the state might not charge you, but you could wait six months?
Not what was, we were led to believe, that they're unavailable or unable to get here on a timely basis.
Yes, the position's in next year's budget, no, it's not being utilized. The existing contract that we had with the independent contractor terminated as of April 30. So that contract had terminated by its own terms already, anyway.
So if we run up against it, we get extremely busy, and we have more inspections than the state guys can cover, we still have the option to go get someone to help us if we need to. So covered all the bases. Anybody else? Alderman Stevens?
Do we have anything in our codes that says what a plumbing inspector has to be? Do they have to be a licensed plumber? Do they have to be certified? Do we have anything that says that, you know, just somebody off the street can do this because they like to look at plumbing?
The, I mean, that's kind of interesting. Yes, a plumbing inspector is required to be a licensed plumbing inspector, that's both state, plumber, that's both state law. Interestingly, several years ago, the state passed an additional regulation that nobody has ever enforced because they don't exist, that required that your plumbing inspector could now have to be a certified plumber, but it had to be a certified plumbing inspector to the State of Illinois. But the state never provided a real mechanism for certifying the inspectors, go figure. I haven't checked lately, but the last time we called the state on that one, they said, oh, we're going to repeal that. But yes, it does have to be a licensed plumber.
Because I remember that little certified inspector thing, but nobody could find the class or how to get certified for it, I remember that a couple of years ago.
That's exactly right.
Exactly right. Anybody else? All right. Good, you're good? Okay. Under public works unfinished business, there is none this evening. Under public works new business, item A is well number three and well number eight, valve repairs.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, well number three, well number eight, we have some valves that need to be replaced and/or rebuilt. We received three proposals to complete that work. Dorner Company, $33,683, Cerone Piping and Mechanical Inc. I would recommend approval of the low bid from the Dorner Company in the amount of $33,683 for the rebuilding or replacement of the identified valves at well number three and well number eight. This work will be paid for from our water depreciation funds.
I have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Breton, second by Alderman Frank. Questions or comments? Alderman Freeman.
So Brent, can you maybe help me understand the huge discrepancy here? There's like almost $20,000 difference between the highest and the medium, and $40,000 between the highest and the lowest. Is it just like a closed bid thing and these, you know, some people try to stiff us and they're trying to get more than what it's worth, or how does that work?
Sometimes it's hard to explain the numbers that are provided. Obviously, it reflects their, their, their feelings on what they need to get the job done. It's for all the equipment materials and the labor, something that could have...
Something that could affect those pricing is how busy an individual is. If the contractor's really busy, booked up, then he'll give us a price. And if he gets it, then that's, he's going to be worth his while, but otherwise, if he's so busy that he really doesn't want to do it, but he'll still provide the price, that may have something to do with it. It's really hard to say what's really behind the cost, but obviously, Dorner Company is the most reasonable in this case.
Additional questions or comments?
And also for the, for the, our new members, council members, our water depreciation funds, those are, that's our savings account that we put money into on a monthly basis through the budgetary process to pay for upgrades and improvements to our plant physical properties as things wear out that need to be replaced. So that's where, it doesn't affect our budget per se, because it comes out of the savings account, if you will.
Additional questions or comments? None, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Motion is passed unanimously. Item B, we have the sewer jet truck replacement.
Again, memo in your packet, our current budget includes four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the replacement of our existing two thousand and two Vaccon sewer cleaner that's mounted on a Sterling truck chassis. We received two bids for the replacement with a new sewer jet truck. The pricing is through the suburban purchasing cooperative, which is a cooperative of agencies, public agencies, municipalities, county governments, and the whole Chicago region, that they go out on a regular basis for pricing, and that's what, that's where these prices are done through, is that joint purchasing cooperative. Standard Equipment Company was a Vector twenty-one, two hundred I. There's a picture of what is attached in here, along with a memo, is a copy of their pricing, with a copy of the vehicle. The first page there, the Vector, that's actually what it would look like if it was on an international chassis. And then if you go to the last page of the supplement, that's the picture with the Kenworth chassis, which is the one that we're looking at, that was bid for this, from Standard Equipment. We also received a bid from EJ Equipment for a Vaccon V two twelve H E N. The cost for the Vector was four hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, and they were going to provide a trade-in of our existing unit of fifty-four thousand for a net cost of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. The Vaccon was four hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. They were going to provide a trade-in of fifty thousand dollars for our existing unit for a final net cost of four hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. The Vector that's quoted, like I said, it's on a Kenworth chassis, and it's a low-profile chassis, so it's, lowers the height to as low as it can be for clearance issues when we're out doing the work and stuff for clearing low-hanging branches, or whatever the case may be, parking it in our garage down at the water department. We got to make sure we have all the clearance that we can have there. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Standard Equipment Company in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars for a twenty-twenty Vector twenty-one, two hundred I. This work will be paid for from Santeria Sewer Depreciation Funds.
I have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderman Snow, second please.
Second.
Second by Alderman Brearton. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Freeman.
Just a simple question, do we have a place to park this new one?
Yes, it'll be parked where the old one, where the old one currently resides. And for, again, for information for council members, our sewer jet truck, this is what we use to go out to clean all our sanitary sewer lines and our storm sewer lines. The benefits of this new truck versus the one we have now are several. There'll be more pressure, longer hose length, it's going to be a bigger diameter hose. Besides, we get more pressure. It comes with a three sixty revolving hose reel, so that no matter what angle or how we pull up to a manhole, we'll be able to move it, adjust it, so we won't have to get it in a specific position, because our other one did not have that variability to it. It's got the suction device, one of the bigger things we do too is hydroexcavate when we're, for duly locates and utility lines, to get those located and uncovered, we use the hydroexcavating, where we basically suck the dirt and materials out, off of it to where we pothole to find those locations, this will do that as well. Again, there's more power, it's a little bit bigger vehicle than the one we currently have, so it'll hold more water, so we'll have to spend less time. Either it has both wastewater and raw water, larger capacity, so we can spend more time in the field and actually doing the work and not running back and forth, either dumping a load or getting more water. So it'll be a more efficient machine than the one we currently have as well.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? There are none, all those in favor approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed unanimously. Next up, we have the Highline Lift Station Fence bids.
With our recent purchase of the additional property around the Highline Lift Station, we need to get a fence installed there. We received the following bids for that installation, Doc Fence, nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars, Creative Fence, nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and Rock Valley Fence, eleven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Doc Fence Company in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars for the installation of a six-foot chain-link fence around the Highline Lift Station property.
I have a motion.
This work will be paid for from our sanitary sewer depreciation funds.
Thank you, I have a motion to that effect. Motion, Alvin Porter, second please. Second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Freeman.
Okay, Brent, I first have a question and a comment, so this is a two-parter. My question is, are these bids like solid, can they be negotiated at all? What I'm asking is because the difference between a local fence company here in Belvedere and one in Rockford is, you know, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. So could we ask Creative Fence to bring their price down three hundred and give it to them? And if not, I personally like to shop local, sometimes I do pay a little more, but for two hundred and seventy-two dollars, I think that that's not outrageous, and I would love to go with the local company, anyway.
I'll defer to the city attorney.
City attorney.
The reason why I'm hemming and hawing is, the general rule when you're dealing with the bidding requirements and bidding process is, no, you cannot do that. You could reject all the bids and then negotiate whatever you want to, and then weigh the bidding requirements and go forward and retain that person. You are always free to negotiate with the lowest bidder, who you're going to choose anyway and try and get a better deal. But to, so to speak, take the lowest bidder, say, ah, we don't really like you, we'll go to somebody else and see if they can get a lower bid, no, you're not free to do that. You are always free as part of your bidding requirements, and I don't know if our bidding requirements in this case have it out there, or in your bidding processes, set forth, for example, in your ordinances, to give a preference to local contractors, that you can do, you're required to get the lowest responsible bidder, and certainly, if it's set forth in your procedures and in the bidding packet, a more local person can be deemed to be more responsible. Now that all being said, none of these bids were actually required to be bid. It's all below the twenty thousand dollar current threshold that we have now. So the bidding process arguably didn't even apply to it in the first place. However, we did bid it out, we did get proposals for it. If the council wanted to go with somebody other than the lowest bid, I would suggest rejecting all the bids and simply award it to whomever you want to, if you're going to go through that process.
And I guess I would add, all of these companies, I think, have done work for us in the past, so we do have a working relationship with all of them. I know there's one municipality, I don't know if they still do, to the south of us that has a preference, a local bid preference. I think that may sound good on the surface, but I think that kind of hurts your position overall, because it covers all projects and it applies that way. And I think bidders will take note of that, and they will make exceptions to their bids because of that. So I think in the long run, it's probably not the best idea to do.
It's kind of like you lay it out there and say, okay, give us a bid. And the reason we even bid this is so, when we came back to council with it, somebody said, aren't we supposed to go to bids or not? You know, so we can just, you know. It's, I agree that it would be nice to make sure all of our bids went to local companies, but they have the opportunity to give us a lower bid, too. And, I mean, at this point, as Brent said, we've worked with, actually, the first two, I think, about equal over time. Have we used Rock Valley? I thought we used Rock Valley previously.
We've used, like I said, we've used all three of them, probably the one that we've used the most is probably Doc. But again, usually when we do that, it's all based on proposals and prices bid submitted. And just a note, because I didn't catch it till tonight, I think Clayton saw it also, but the five oh two Taylor Ridge, Belvedere address, for Creative Fence, that is their address. On the previous item we talked about, the EGA Equipment also has the five oh two Taylor Ridge, Belvedere address. When I cut and paste, I didn't change that, but EGA Equipment is out of Addison, Illinois, just a footnote.
Alderman Snow, did you have a comment?
I was just going to address that, like, we just got half a million dollars for a project, there wasn't that much difference for a local, but obviously.
Oh, I see.
So what is the, what is the preference of the council?
My recommendation for what it's worth would be to, to go with the low bid.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone want to make a motion to vote down everything and revote? There are none then. The contract has previously recognized, we have a motion second, all those in favor, on ninety-one, fifty-five, figure Doc Fence Company, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be the provider, thank you. Next, we have the stormwater utility feasibility study. Director Anderson.
Thank you. Memo in your packet, our current budget includes a hundred thousand dollars for the feasibility study and possible implementation of our stormwater utility for the city of Belvedere. As you may recall, stormwater utility was one of our seven possible general fund revenue sources presented to the city council as part of our twenty-twenty budget program, process. The stormwater utility would operate similar to our water and sewer utilities, with a fee charged for the control of stormwater runoff through construction, operation, and maintenance of a storm sewer system. It's just another tool in our toolbox that would allow for additional revenues to be generated to pay for stormwater projects and the oversight. We have MPDS requirements that we have to comply with on an annual basis. Those requirements seem to be getting more burdensome, more requirements being added to the list. One of the things that we've started to do this year for the first time is we have to do in-stream monitoring after rain events, at least on a quarterly basis after rain events, and present that information as part of our annual report now to the state for our MPDS program, as an example. We sent out a request for statements of interest and qualifications that went out to eight consulting firms with five responding. The submittals from the five responding firms were then reviewed by myself, the mayor, the city attorney, as the public works superintendent, as well as the public works committee chairman, Alderman Brooks, and the vice chairman, Alderman Stevens. Based on those rankings, we conducted interviews with the top three ranked firms, and based on those interviews, we, the team of Faragam and Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions was selected to provide the proposal to the city for doing the feasibility study, a copy of which is attached for your guys' review. Based on that, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Faragam Wood in the amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars for completing a stormwater utility feasibility study for the city of Belvedere. This work will be paid for from the capital project funds. And again, it's a feasibility study, so they'll go through as it was outlined in their proposal, and determine and let us know what the feasibility is for actually the implementation of a stormwater utility, what kind of costs we'd be looking at, what kind of revenues we'd be looking at, and what that process would be to actually implement the utility if the city council decides to proceed in that direction.
Motion by Alderman Snow, I have a second, please. Second by Alderman Freeman. Questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
So Brent, when we talk about the stormwater deal, generically speaking, gravel areas, if a place has, for instance, the Shell Station took down the old bank drive-through and put gravel in there, is that considered, is there, is that considered non-paved, or is that considered paved, or some, somewhere in between?
That'd be a somewhere in between. There's runoff coefficients that are applied to all the, all the different types of surfaces, surfaces, ground surfaces, whether it's from turf that's never been disturbed, or if it's completely paved with asphalt. So there's runoff coefficients that are assigned to different characteristics of those things. And that's one of the things that the feasibility will look at in a small portion. They'll pick the different zoning classifications, land use areas, properties, and come up with those runoff coefficients. That's one method of determining what the fee structure is based on. You may decide that all residential units are lots, and you may break it up into sizes, you know, if it's lots, six thousand square feet or less pays X amount, greater than six thousand will pay this X amount, whatever that feasibility, whatever that method is utilized to determine what that fee is based on. And that's probably out of the, I think there's, there's over thirty stormwater utilities now that are in place in the state of Illinois, and I think most of them are, do a runoff coefficient method of calculation.
Alderman Snow.
And a couple of other things, does it take into account decks? Obviously, if they pave underneath the deck, or have it impermeable to runoff, but do decks consider, considered a, an issue?
It all depends.
In the yard.
Again, what you'll do, what will be done, because you won't get it, you could go to the, to the degree that you're doing each individual lot, but that's really impractical. So again, they'll take a slice and come up with an average, and that's what that fee will be based on, is an average. And then depending on how, how complex of a system you want it to develop, you could certainly take that into account. You can also, depending on how this plays out, you could offer up credits. If you put in rain gardens, or if you do things to minimize your impacts on stormwater, then theoretically, you could offer credits to those individuals that do that. Some of the existing utilities do that, some do not. Again, and that's, the feasibility study will kind of look at all those questions and provide some insight on ways and means that the city could go about implementing such a utility.
Continue, please.
And since you know that there's thirty other municipalities that do this, generically speaking, just a regular old residential lot across the street here, what are they looking at a, and I'm not going to hold you to it, but are they looking at a ten dollar a month, a twenty dollar a month, a hundred dollar a year, any kind of wild guess?
It is a function, your rate is a function of, at this point, what it's going to cost, what it's going to cost to, for the revenue you need to pay for the costs that you have, that you're incurring, but the, and that's your, I guess you're set, your basic amount that you're looking for. Right now, we budget thirty thousand dollars specifically on an annual basis for stormwater, for storm sewer repair and maintenance. We spend probably, so let's say fifty thousand dollars a year out of our current budget right now for just maintenance work. So you got to take that into account, and then you take into account the capital program and what improvements, as the, our south side stormwater study said, forty-two million dollar price tag, not to mention the portions of the north side of town that don't have any storm sewer at all, that still need storm sewer. So you look at the value or the cost of, of what, at that entire system improvements that you would like to complete, and then you work back from that to see what kind of rates would have to be required to generate, to be able to complete that work in a timely fashion. So I think the, the information that I've seen so far, the ranges in the state of Illinois are anywhere from three or four dollars a month to twenty to thirty dollars a month, all depending on what parameters they have. And again, that's why we go through the feasibility study, that we don't just, you know, jump right and say, yeah, we need a stormwater utility and... right and say, yeah, we need a stormwater utility, and we're gonna do it, and here we go. We really need to look at it, you really need to get the public buy-in, all the residents. So it's a, it's a long process. I think it's indicated in the proposal, it's gonna be a two-month, it's gonna be a three-month process to get this done, and then if you decide to move forward with implementation, it may take 12 months to, to do an implementation. By the time you educate the public and go through the process and get to where everybody's comfortable with moving forward.
Just no questions or comments? Alderman Frank.
Thank you. Brent, this might be a stupid question, but I'm gonna ask it. Do you have to do the feasibility study, or can we go by, you know, your knowledge of what needs to be done? I mean, the sewer department, it does work on problem areas.
You're gonna wanna do the feasibility, if you're, if the council's serious on implementation of a, establishing a stormwater utility, a separate utility, you're gonna wanna do the feasibility study, because not only do we talk about projects and just the revenue generation, it's how you actually implement that, how you make that, the new system compliant with our water and sewer utilities that we're already doing. Do you do a separate bill? Do you do an annual bill? Do you just make it as part of the water sewer bill? And then you have to look at our water sewer, the softwares involved, and making those talk to each other, and seeing how that works out. So you have to look at all those variables, and that's why, yes, again, that's part of the feasibility study to do that.
Additional, additional questions or comments? Alderman Burton.
So this, this guy is gonna be a, a fee for taxpayers that's gonna go toward the general fund, correct?
No, it's gonna go out toward water and sewer for the implementation of those dollars to correct the $42 million problem we have with stormwater management.
No, it's, it's actually, you're gonna be creating a, a separate utility, a stormwater utility, just like we have a water and sewer utility now. The water and sewer utility is funded and paid for by the fees that we are charged in that utility. We don't co-mix general fund and water and sewer fund. Water and sewer pays for water and sewer, general fund pays for general fund. If you decide to implement a stormwater utility, those stormwater costs that are now being paid for out of the general fund will then be paid for from your revenue that you're generating from the stormwater utility. Whatever that fee that you end up establishing, and it's a fee, it's a user fee, whatever you, that fee that you establish, those revenues will pay then for your stormwater improvements. And that gives you another source of revenue you could bond from, you could do whatever the council decides how we're to use that revenue, but it would be specific to stormwater.
Ms. Tobin.
I was just gonna say, for example, this year in our budget, $1.1 million of general fund money is being used for stormwater management. So if you were to have the separate utility, that's another 1.1 million that could go back into the streets and roads, rather than being spent on the stormwater. And I also wanted to mention this study, this isn't, this is budgeted. So this $48,000 is budgeted in your fiscal year '20.
Alderman Snow.
And maybe to address some of the possible long-term outcomes. Right now, these, you have guys that work for the sewer plant, guys that work for the water department, which all get paid out of the general, or not the general fund, they get paid out of the utility that we collect. Do you anticipate having more manpower associated with this particular utility?
Yes, over time, you're gonna probably see that. Initially, you would probably assign, at least, you would, there would be some salary aspect that would be paid for out of this stormwater utility, yes.
Alderman Porter.
So this, this fee would be on its own line item in the budget, then? It would be completely away from the general fund?
It'd be a whole nother, a whole separate department, so it still falls under public works. So my, so the budget book is still be as thick, you're gonna end up with another divider in there for stormwater, will be a, a separate fund, if you would.
The money can't be spent for anything except stormwater management, I think is your real question, right? Alderman Freeman.
So basically, we're gonna pay Fred Graham $48,000 to tell us whether we should or should not impose a, a stormwater tax?
They're not going to tell us if we should or shouldn't, council will decide if we shouldn't or shouldn't. They're gonna tell us a, how you, how, what looks like to be the best way to do it, how much it would cost, here's what your benefits are, here's the methods that we would choose to do that. So they're gonna basically provide you with the information that you're going to need in order to make that decision, is ultimately, do we want to go forward with this or not? And if we don't, then we'll continue to fund stormwater projects and programs as we do now through the general fund, and, and that will continue on. But again, when we looked at the different revenue sources through our budget process, and we, there were seven of them that were identified that we could utilize to provide additional funds to do public improvements, the stormwater utility was one of those.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Stevens.
I've had a lot of comments on this, and people have heard about it in general, and I've tried to explain to them what the feasibility study's gonna do, and what the stormwater sewer tax is gonna do. And I've got a lot of negative comments on it, because it's gonna be another tax, and the first thing they're afraid of is, it's gonna start out as a stormwater sewer utility tax, and then, i.e. the utility tax we currently have, it's gonna go for something entirely different. That's their biggest problem, because in the past, we've been told, any kind of tax money, we can't earmark it for something. And they're afraid that it's gonna be the exact same thing as other taxes.
Okay.
It's gonna go into general fund and be used as general fund, like the utility tax and the public safety tax that the county has, and a whole bunch of stuff like that.
Do you consider your water bill and your sewer bill a tax?
Not the water and sewer, but I would consider this a tax.
This is a fee for service to solve the problem of stormwater management. It is not a tax on your water bill or your sewer bill. The feasibility study is to find out what it would cost, what the revenue might look like, when we, they determine what the impervious surface is and how to amend this problem. It will be a separate part of its own fund, which will be under public works, will not be part of the general fund, and it will go solely to interdict those problems. So the idea was, there is no feasible way for us to come up with $42 million to fix the stormwater problem. It's obviously something that needs to be done over a number of years. Nor can we devote a million dollars a year to dealing with this problem and still fix roads and do the other things that we need to do. So I've heard what you're saying, and people like to call it the rain tax. It's not a tax, it's a fee for service, just like the water bill and the sewer bill, to be able to provide the remediation of elements within the community that will help us deal with the stormwater problems that we have, now that we have 500-year rains every three years. So, you know, part of the process is, there will be town hall meetings, there will be public input along the way. We, we have also included that as part of the feasibility study, and Faragam's associates will present those to the community. Ultimately, it comes down to a decision by the council whether or not they want to move forward with what we've learned from the feasibility study. So the ball will be in your court at that point in time, and there are a number of different ways to address that. You can vote it up, you can say no, we don't think we want to go that way, you can decide that we want to go to an advisory referendum and let the community have a voice in which way to go, but I think it's important to understand, it is not a tax. What's it a tax on? There has to be a commodity that is being paid for initially that we add a tax to. We're not, have, we don't have any funding for stormwater management at this point, except we take it out of the general fund and rob Peter to pay Paul, so we're not adding an additional tax. It's not like you get your electric bill and we're adding a tax on that. What we're saying is, the money that this would produce would go directly to stormwater management.
And they, and to add to that, the runoff coefficients, the fees, when that's looked at, that applies to all property owners within our corporate boundaries. So if it's churches, if it's schools, if it's Chrysler, if it's Deans, as well as the property residents, it's, it's everybody who owns property within the limits of the city of Belvedere. Agricultural fields, it's everybody. There's nobody that will not pay the fee. It's just a matter of looking at all the land uses we have, all what your typical surface requirements are for each of those zoning classifications, coming up with some averages, and then running those numbers, and refining them, and looking at what those impacts would be.
Yes, Alderman Snow.
So is it a fair assumption that with the generic statement that most of your commercial businesses and manufacturers have large paved areas, that they would probably hit the largest burden of this, and I was glad to hear that schools and other non-for-profits will have to participate, just like they pay their water and sewer, they're, they don't get a free ride on that like they do the property tax?
That's correct. So one method rationale to utilize is, you come up, you determine what your average typical runoff coefficient is for your typical residential lot. And then once you come up with that, then, that's called an ERU. And then, once you're, once you come up with that ERU value, then you can apply that value to all the other land uses and, and apply that, and you may determine that Perry School might be 10 ERUs, Chrysler may be 100 ERUs, whatever, whatever, however that ratio, that rationale is, is developed, depending on their acreage and what the runoffs are. But it all goes back to, it all goes back to an equivalent residential unit, an ERU is what they did, what is determined. That's one of the rationales that are used. So again, the feasibility study will, will hopefully provide the answers to these questions and make the council and then make the community more comfortable with the process and what we do now. I guess when we move into, you know, you move into a new house, you come to Belvedere and, and water and sewer, and you get your bill for water and sewer, and there's, you're not really surprised by that, you're, you expect that. The fact that you're looking at establishing a whole new utility that hasn't been there up till now, that's been, just, just paid for part of your general fund, could be daunting. And like I said, some people will look at it as, they'll call it, you know, it is a tax, but it's not, it's a user fee. So everybody that owns the property within our corporate limits will be charged a fee.
Alderman Freeman.
So in, in the fifth ward, as you know, Brent, we have major flooding issues. People have been literally washed out of their homes. They're begging me to do something about this. I don't doubt we need this at all. You know, you just gave us, a couple weeks ago, maybe, a, you know, our water and sewer bills are the lowest of all over in this region, so, you know, I personally don't think that adding a stormwater utility that we desperately need is, you know, gonna break the bank on anybody here.
Well, again, and that's, and that's what the feasibility study will hopefully present to you, the information of what impact that could look like, and, and what kind of an impact does the council, are they gonna accept or not accept, and decide if they want to implement it or not?
Alderman Porter.
Yeah, just one quick question. Was there any duplication of work in this study from the other big study that we did with the flooding study? I mean, can they use some of that data, you know, to do this study?
They will have access to all information, all studies, everything that we have, they'll have access to, to be able to utilize. They took that into consideration on pricing their proposal to us. So yes, they'll be able to use as much information as we have currently that they can utilize. And this, right now, you also will notice that in their, in their proposal to us, they included the GIS stormwater update areas. That, right now, I'm not even gonna consider that at this point. We may very well proceed with that, or I may make a request to the council to proceed with that, but I didn't wanna mix apples and oranges, I just wanted to talk strictly about the feasibility study at this point. So if you decide to go with the feasibility study, at some point there, I may be coming back to you to go ahead and have them do the, the remainder of the updates that we need to do for the GIS storm sewer, because that is our MPDS requirement as well.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion is passed, and we forward to city council for final disposition, which brings us up to item E, which is a block party request of the Oxy Guzman at 93 Fuller Lane. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, second. By Alderman Burton. Questions, comments, further discussion? There are none, all those in favor, approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Oxy's gonna have a party. Which brings us to F, a block party request of James Rogers at 520 East Pleasant. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Burton. Questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
Bring a dish to pass and BYOB, that usually means bring your own booze. Are they aware that it's, of, of, that they're not allowed to drink on the public?
He, he received a copy of this, which states at the bottom of this, what you can and cannot do on the streets. And just for your information, the Guzman one has hosted a block party before, and we've not had any issues. Mr. Rogers, this is the first time for his request.
And we always, with the first time of the block party, we visit it to make sure things are in order, within the parameters of having a good time without destroying the city. Any other questions or comments? There are none, all those in favor, approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, Mr. Rogers will be having a party. Thank you. Director Anderson. Under other, under A, we have Police Department camera grant, Chief Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I previously presented you with information advising that the police department had submitted for a grant from the Illinois Training and Standards Board requesting $86,280 for the purchase of 15 brand-new HD squad car cameras. This would be to replace the remaining digital cameras currently in the squad cars. This would be a grant request that did not require a match by the department or city of Belvedere. On April 16th, 2019, the city of Belvedere was notified that the Illinois Training and Standards Board awarded the Belvedere Police Department $86,280 in funding for 15 Panasonic arbitrator MK3 HD front and rear squad car cameras. The motion before you is for approval to accept the grant from the Illinois Training and Standards Board in the amount of $86,280 for the purchase of 15 HD squad car video cameras.
May I have a motion to approve? Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Frank. Questions or comments? Alderman Snow.
I see in the grant part, it does mention that it can be used for video, for the car cameras and body cameras and training, but you're, you don't have to hit all three categories, you just need to, just needs to fall into one of those.
Correct. We submit for the monies that we're requesting for the equipment, yes.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? There are none, all those in favor, approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I would take that as unanimous. Motion is approved. Now, under the Finance Department, a neighborhood grant. Ms. Tobin.
This is a grant that we applied for to pay for all the beautification projects at the new General Mills Park, so this grant is a $2,500 grant that'll pay for the new trees, shrubs, bushes, flowers, that type of thing, which we are hoping to have installed with the help of the children with the lunch program, and get them involved in the process of helping sometime, I think the end of June, if it stops raining.
May I have a motion to approve acceptance of the grant? Motion by Alderman Freeman, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further deliberations? Alderman Snow.
And I think I saw it on the site, planned the, one time for the And I think I saw it on the site plan, the, one time for the park. It does, it is going to have running water typically, or no? Will it have water available?
We will have, the hand pump station is actually going to be within the fenced area of the Highline lift station. Now, there will be a four-foot walk-through gate. There's going to be a shed installed within the Highline property to store materials and stuff that we need for the lunch program. So during the lunch programs, the gate will be opened, and access will be there for the hind room, as it is now during the program.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? There are none, all is in favor approval, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is approved. Which brings us to the Legal Department, Smoke-Free Belvedere Code. Attorney Drucker?
This one's actually fairly simple. We have a local ordinance that mirrors some of the state regulations as opposed to underage possession of tobacco, as well as the sale of tobacco to those under the age of eighteen. You may have heard the state raises those limits to twenty-one lately, so these amendments simply mirror, work to mirror the state law, raising it to twenty-one.
Motion to approve the amendments. Alman Porter, may I have second, please? Alman Ratcliffe, questions or comments? Alman Freeman?
So what if we don't modify this?
Well, at that point, anybody between the age of eighteen and twenty-one would have to be charged under state law, bringing them into the criminal court system, assessing the likely appointment of a public defender, hiring an attorney, and going through the whole criminal court process, because that's the only way to enforce it. By having an ordinance, it actually makes it less burdensome upon the defendant. If they are charged with this, it's a simple ticket. They show up to court and do public service, worker pay a fine. And they're done usually in one day, as opposed to potentially multiple court appearances.
We could use selective enforcement on this, though, and choose as a municipality not to enforce this. You know, at eighteen, you can go work sixty hours a week at Chrysler, but you can't have a smoke on your break. You can buy a home, you can raise a family, you can pay all your bills. You can enlist in the service, but you can't come home on leave and have a cigarette. I think it's a travesty. Unfortunately, I'm not in a position to make state law, but I do believe that our municipality should not be enforcing this at all.
We are required to enforce all laws handed down from the state.
We can have selective enforcement.
No, we cannot, but no, we cannot, but we will continue to try to be, mitigate, depending on circumstances, as we sort of think.
Nineteen, you're cool, you can't have a cigarette?
Okay, I'm going to take you on, straight on on this. To me, tobacco is the gateway drug to everything else in addiction. We lose, one of the highest death rates is from people with complications of smoking with people in my age. I know I was a smoker for twenty-five years, and it affected my health in a negative way. So we have no, we did not have skin in the game to fight this, except we had conversations with our elected representatives. This was passed almost unanimously in the legislature. I remember, was probably twenty-five years ago, they started to put warnings on cigarettes. In retaliation for that, the price of cigarettes went from thirty-five cents a pack to eight dollars a pack. So we will enforce, as per the law, I understand your position. I understand that people can enlist in the military. There are a lot of places where you cannot drink until you're twenty, until you're twenty-one. This is just the state of Illinois, whether I like it or not, it's the law. And we cannot ask our police officers to selectively enforce the law. If they decide what they're going to do in a specific instance, I will support that decision. And that's all I'm going to say about this. Go ahead.
We don't do that with alcohol. And again, you know, the same arguments go for that. And if you start looking at the revenue source alone, you you make a strong argument, lower the age of alcohol and tobacco, because now you're selling more packs and more alcohol, and that's all high tax dollars.
But laws should be made for the public good. Who is anybody hurting besides themselves by smoking a cigarette? I get alcohol, you're eighteen, you're out there driving, you're maybe not as responsible to handle your alcohol. But who are you hurting at the age of eighteen by smoking a cigarette besides yourself?
Chief Woody?
In terms, in regarding to the city ordinance specifically, the state allows us to make ordinances more restrictive than the state law, but not less restrictive. So we can either mirror it, make it more restrictive, but not less restrictive.
Alman Porter?
Well, you ask who it's affecting. You have to keep in mind that all the people are getting lung cancer, and all the healthcare costs is driving the healthcare cost up for the average citizen to ridiculous amounts. So it is affecting, the smoking is affecting the general public in a negative way in that, that respect.
So it's, it's a decision that was taken out of our hands. I don't think that there's anybody here who is a smoker who wished that they had never started, if they told the truth. So we will enforce it as per the state law. So all of those in favor approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion is passed. Thank you for your comments and commentary. That, that's it for tonight, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by Alman Frank, second by Alman Burton, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, it was a lively session tonight.